The February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the High Point Regional High School Board of Education, please stand for a mic. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Open Public Meetings Act statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices, and notice sent to the New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the Clerk of the boroughs of Branchville and Sussex, and the townships of Frankfurt, Lafayette, and Wantage. Our mission statement. High Point Regional High School in partnership with staff, family, and community is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible, productive members of a diverse society. May I ask for a roll call?
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mrs. Diaz?
Here.
Ms. Gall?
Here.
Ms. Longburg?
Here.
Ms. Orsi?
Here.
Ms. Palza?
Here.
Ms. Schuman?
Here.
Mr. Vanstone?
Here.
And Ms. Wise, he's back. Dr. Ripley?
Here.
A motion will now be made at the High Point Regional High School Board of Education enter executive session to provide an update on legal personnel and negotiations items which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey public law nineteen-seventy-five Chapter two thirty-one, Open Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the Board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The Board will reconvene in public session in person and virtually at the conclusion of the executive session. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken, and we anticipate to be returning just before seven. So may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to return to public session, please?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are back in public session. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes for the regular meeting minutes of January twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, and the executive session minutes of January twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five. I'll make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, or corrections, or questions on minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a roll call.
Okay, Ms. Orsi? Yes. Ms. Long, Longburg?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palza?
I could say because I wasn't here.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to our first public comments section of the evening on agenda items only in accordance with the open public ed act. We will open for public comments at this time. Each speaker should state his or her name and address. You will have three minutes to address the Board, which will be timed by myself. We will limit this section to no longer than forty-five minutes. We ask that you please be respectful and mindful that your comments are being recorded. And as usual, we have two methods to address the Board. One in person at our lectern, and the other virtual to the email address that should be displayed on the site that you're looking at if you're attending virtually. Anything from the virtual?
I sent you one email today, I don't know if that's...
You don't always get... Just recently sent it through?
Yes. Or about an hour ago.
If you've gotten it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, please.
Oh, this evening at six oh one, we got a, uh, an email from Megan Horniak. And it says, "Good evening, this is Megan Horniak, President of the High Point Football Club, reaching out again to ask where the winnings from the T-Mobile sweepstakes will be applied. On behalf of the football club and all the sports and programs that use the football field, we hope the Board of Ed will use these funds for the betterment of the field, for the football team, cheerleading team, and any other sports or activities that use this space. Thank you. Megan Horniak, Lafayette, New Jersey." I do have an answer. So the winnings total is five thousand dollars. High Point is still in discussion with the various stakeholders, but they have come to agree that the most likely and most necessary are upgrades to scoreboards and/or to our outdoor P.A. system. These are the likely areas for improvement, which I believe are responsive to Ms. Horniak's question. And our outdoor P.A. system, if anyone has gone to a football game or to graduation, maybe has experienced the P.A. system, which I thought we had upgraded, but as the years go past, it might be more than ten years ago, and what I think is an upgrade from ten years ago is insufficient. So I think it's allocated to one of those areas.
That was the only comment on the virtual platform. So I'll then entertain a motion to close first public comment section.
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moving on to presentations. Our first presentation, Mr. Kyle Lewansky, Speaker of the House, give us an update on student council.
So this is gonna probably just be a recap of what I said last month, but most of what happened was in February. Which, again, the theme for February was loyalty. And we had a presentation, and we had many activities during the course of the month that kind of correlated with this activity, or this theme. On Tuesday, February eleventh, we had the Center for Prevention and Counseling and Incredible.us come in, and they set up tables in the main hallway and gave students information, and they participated in a self-love activity relating with loyalty. And on February thirteenth and fourteenth, senior class sold hot chocolates and brownies in the hallway during the lunch, and the bigger student council set up a table for a, for crafts and, for a rattle for which the winners were awarded either a stuffed animal, or I would say a themed stuffed animal, or a blue rose. And also during that same time period, the match that exposed results, we, uh, we sold those for two dollars each during the lunch. And on February eighteenth, the class of twenty-eight, twenty-eight hosted a dance ability with Pizza One, Smarta, where ten percent of the profits were distributed to the classes once. Our March theme is patience, and we have a lot more craft activities planned for March. We have a mandelob craft plan, we have shell painting, rock painting, and canvas painting, and all of these activities are free. And that's a recap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, Ms. Carl Mary Russo from the HPA. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Carl Mary Russo, President of High Point Education Association. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of over a hundred HPA members working throughout the district here. As you know, we have been working under an expired agreement since June. That's eight months without a raise, eight months of paying this year's bills with last year's salary, and eight months of wondering whether this Board of Education respects and values the work we do in this community. Despite the unsettled agreement, we have continued to bring our very best to work every day. We've gone above and beyond the terms of our expired contract to make sure that our students have everything they need to succeed. We volunteer to cover classes when substitutes are not available, and that's on a daily basis. We tutor students during lunch for makeup work and for extra help. We volunteer to coach special education sports programs in our Unified Sports Coaches. We donated our time at the beginning of the school year to incorporate and oversee the portfolio process for the seniors who did not pass state testing in their junior year. We volunteer our shop rooms for field trips. We donate our time to mentor teachers who are experienced yet are new to High Point, as well as attend monthly meetings for Teachers and Training Program, TNT. We volunteer our school-wide committees, such as the cell phone and scheduling task forces. We donate our personal time to write college recommendations for our students. We volunteer to run a food pantry for our students in need, which is before, during, and after school on a daily basis. We donate our time to host eighth grade parakeet for incoming freshmen and hold elect affairs during lunch periods. We volunteer monthly as faculty advisors, and all of this is just the tip of the proverbial iceberg. Just look around you, you can see the results. They make all of you pretty, look pretty good. Our district is consistently rated one of the best in this county, and our community is proud of our school. But make, make no mistake, none of this could have happened without the people who stand here tonight. Thank you. The success is a direct result of dedicated teachers and educational support professionals, secretaries, custodial workers, and groundskeepers. But our dedication can only take us so far. We are becoming discouraged and frankly, pretty disgusted because the Board of Education does not care to recognize at the bargaining table just how much we have done to make this district's success possible. We have been through more than a dozen negotiation sessions in the last year, but you have demonstrated very little willingness to work toward a fair competitive contract. Instead, you insist that we accept a settlement below county average. Your singular proposals suggest that you can dictate a settlement and refuse to budge. This is no way to bargain, and it is certainly no way to show respect for the staff you publicly claim to appreciate. Your position is unreasonable, unfair, and unproductive, and is the sole reason we had to declare an impasse and wait for state-appointed mediators to come to address this issue. And by wait, I mean wait even longer than we should have as you elected to postpone our originally scheduled mediation date a couple of weeks ago for alleged bad weather that never arrived. I am not quite sure why you're behaving this way, but I can assure you that this is no way to leave. So if you truly care about this district and the staff who make it successful, we urge you to come to the March eighteenth mediation session, ready to take negotiations, classes seriously. It's your job, and it's our right under law to expect from you. Stop playing these games, and let's get it done. High Point staff, students, and community deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time.
So it is not, and unfortunate, and I get to address the entire audience that's here, it is not the position of the Board to negotiate in public. And I find it unfortunate that your leadership has taken the step to do such and potentially harm the trust that those two bodies have so far. Let me just, I will say, we, the Board, respects and values every one of you. I personally can say I respect and value every one of you as a teacher. Perhaps you don't realize that on this Board, there is a former union president, a current union president, and one, two, three educators beyond that. It is probably the most beneficial Board constituency that you could have to negotiate with a union. That's not gonna say that we aren't Board members first and foremost, however. We have a job to do, and we believe, we have been doing that in good faith, and we remain willing to negotiate even now, aside from the mediation that was mutually requested. There was a mutual decision to enter into that mediation, there was a mutual decision to set the date of the last mediation session in conjunction with what the state-assigned mediator offered us. We had dates available. Unfortunately, the weather looked like it was not going to be favorable that one evening. We didn't cancel because we wanted to delay negotiations. The mediator was coming from some distance, our attorney was coming from some distance, likely your youth cert rep was coming from some distance. Yes, we were all local. We offered to hold that session virtually, to which we were told the HPA was unwilling to do so. Look, I, I don't think it serves anybody any value in talking about details of what didn't go right here in the past, but I just want you to know, we value, we, we are willing to negotiate and continue negotiating at any time that we can possibly fit in our schedule, and we look forward to the March eighteenth date as much, and resolving and getting your contract that you deserve to a point where we mutually agree on that. So I hope that addresses some of where the Board is. I'm not willing to say too much more because I, I'm bound by, you know, just the terms of the negotiations, the ground rules that we're not supposed to be divulging things, but I felt the need to just respond to what could have been presented to you as misinformation. Anyway, thank you for speaking, Ms. Mink Russo. Next up is our principals' report, Mr. John Allen.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry I have to, I have my back to staff, I apologize in advance for that. Thank you everybody happy going today. I apologize in advance, I have a lot of great recognition and accomplishments to talk about this evening. One of them, and I know Mr. Campbell's gonna show some pictures in a little bit, which is better, we just had the chance to explore and be part of with your executive session, is our Black History Museum, which is really fantastic, there's some that are scoring on behind you on the screen as well. I just wanna say thank you to a couple of our staff members, and Mr. Campbell wants more information about it as well. Michelle Aludo, who's our media center specialist, Natalie DiCarlo, who's our social studies teacher, Sam McClure, who is one of our social studies specialized teachers, Kelly Sheeney, who's one of our teachers, and Jack McCarthy, really the ones that spearheaded this collaborative community effort. I wanna make sure we include our student groups, the LOS, which is the Library Outreach Society, newly formed club this year, as well as the diversity, equity, and inclusion, and those students came together with the staff to form the museum, what you saw. So today was our first day, we got the exhibits, and we're running for the next few days honoring, honoring and celebrating Black History Month, so wanna make sure we spoke about that, and this is a beautiful community effort that you saw there as well. Another school event that's coming up, it's also on the agenda later on, I think, for some notes, a program called Hidden in Blind Sight. Hidden in Blind Sight, if you have not seen it before, is a parent awareness program. It's exactly what it says. They basically do a mock-up of a bedroom and a living space, and that is conducted by Center for Prevention and Counseling, and they are a fantastic community partner. You heard Kyle, said before that they were here for activities here in February, they're here probably two or three times a month doing different activities. So they sponsored that, and we're inviting all parents. They've also shared with certain districts, and it's open to anybody to attend, whether it's a parent, guardian, adult, and it really is just eye-opening to see that things that are harmful to our students and our young children are clearly, can be hidden in blind sight. So that will be notoriety, that's on March twelfth at six P.M. And I wanted to say thank you to one of our township for their ability to utilize a grant that they have acquired, and also thank you to Center for Prevention and Counseling for the, so hopefully we get a good turnout, we've advertised it for, there'll be childcare there as well as food, so hopefully that brings some people in as well. Onto our student capital speeches, which we had a lot in the past few weeks. Congratulations to our art students, Madison Carey, very recently the other day, she, this A.E.N.J., N.J. Pack Late Winter Exhibit. So again, one of our students' artwork, you see many of them all around you, being displayed in other parts of the state. My, the number was actually today, Youth Art Month, which is actually referred to sometimes as YAM, celebration will showcase at the Grams for Sculpture, again, one of our students being displayed in another area. Peters Valley Art Exhibit, if you're not familiar with Peters Valley, they are tremendous, it's a small little plate of wall pack, right? And they do a fantastic job each year of putting on art exhibits throughout the year. So we wanted to congratulate Julie Moss, who I met earlier today, she won first place, Best in Show, and received a Cuber Wire Youth Scholarship. This is actually her second scholarship, she received one earlier this year as well, so hopefully she's got some good options for our school that wrote. Savannah Quinno won auto scholarship for innovation and creativity, as well as, in a separate exhibit, Savannah, who's also in visual photography, was one of fifty pieces chosen to be selected at the Morris Museum. So there's about three hundred and fifty student selections that were entered, and Savannah's one fifty to be selected. So kudos to her, congratulations to all of our art teachers, again, Ms. Sheeney, Ms. Sack, Ms. Daryl, for the great and fantastic mentorship that they do all the time with our students. We also have Teen Arts coming up very soon, March eleventh, for a good eleven, sometimes it's challenging. If you haven't had a chance to be part of Teen Arts, it is still one of the, the best days for our entire county. It's a celebration of our counties, a celebration of our students, there's artwork, there's poetry, there's music, there's dance, there's everything between. I know one of our staffers, Ms. Strout, usually does an awesome poetry slam, and many of our teachers are involved, there's media technology projects, there's all kinds of products that are, that are presented there, so that's on March eleventh, making it to SEC, who receives the hostess, large undertaking with every high school in the county being invited to that. And last but certainly not least for our students, just recently, Sophia Parentino, Trilly Calaruso, and McCann Walsh, were all selected for All-State Travel Choir. Now, as our fourth student, if you remember, a couple months ago, we graduated Andrew Schmidt because he was All-State Mixed Choir. So All-State, if you can imagine that for choir, that is at a top, top level. If you look at an athlete requiring All-State, it doesn't come very often. So the fact that we continuously, through our music program with Mr. Slaney, Mrs. Ricardi, and Mrs. Martin, produce and have two to three to four students a year that achieve that level is just pretty fantastic, and all, all of these students are seniors, only two of them are seniors, so it's very impressive. Onto some of our staff recognition, recently we had James Slaney, we just mentioned with the music department, he was down at New Jersey Music Education Association Conference in Atlantic City, and he led a professional development session titled "The Core Saxophone Tonal Concert: Improving Your Saxophone Section Stone." I said to him, "James, what does that mean? I don't play the saxophone." He was thrilled to talk about it, he's a fantastic saxophone player, he plays in many other different quartets and jazz bands throughout the state, through the county, and he was just delighted to be able to share his, his expertise there. Also, we had Cory Leola, who I think Cory is here somewhere, Cory is there as well behind me, sorry Cory for my back. Bless you. Cory was recently asked to collaborate with the Amistad Commission, PBS Learning, HPA had reached out to Cory, asked if she would be, or asked if they'd be educator, develop a series of lessons on Hazel Scott, so congratulations to Cory. And that, again, another fantastic opportunity where our staff is out there just like our students, and they are leaders, not just here in the county, but also in our state. And also, we have Ms. Britt here, who today was selected in honor for iHeartRadio. iHeartRadio is a big, right, a relic company of multiple stations, I think two or three, and she was nominated as a student, as Teacher of the Month. So I wanted to congratulate Ms. Britt, and that's a pretty cool spirit, she got a chance to go explore the, the radio station, see a little bit about that as well. So that is the, the student side of things. Mr. Dunn, it's okay, I'll, I'll transfer over to athletics, okay? Also, a lot of athletic accomplishments. And I apologize in advance, but you don't like talking about the kids and what they're doing, right? So we had two region girls wrestling champions, so the difference between the girls wrestling and boys wrestling goes right to regions, boys wrestling goes districts and then regions, if you're not familiar with that. Ella Blula and Ella Shangree, both are region champs, so they're moving on to AC, Atlantic City, which will be not this weekend, but the following week, yeah. So we're hoping to see them continue to move on and compete against the best of the best in the state, congratulations to them. On the boys' side of wrestling, we had eleven wrestlers qualify for, for districts, which means they then move on to regions, which will be this weekend for them. So that's a great team effort, and because of those eleven qualifiers, we, as High Point, received a district championship, which we were really an upset, we were going against some pretty high caliber teams, but it takes a team, right, it takes a village, and they were able to take home the district crown. Congratulations to Nick Clayton and Logan Tack, they were champions, district champions, again, it was an awesome accomplishment. By the way, before we got districts, our state team, led by our, our coaching staff, who was phenomenal, second to none in my opinion, and had been for years, took home the thirty-third, thirty-third sectional title, in one of the most thrilling matches that I think we've ever seen, and we won thirty-four, thirty-three. I had a couple of hard competitions along the way, and it was a pretty exciting match to see our, as well. But we're not done. Kira Lewis and Katie Bruno, who are two of our girl bowlers, they qualified for states. So kudos to Mr. Perry, and those bowlers, as they will continue on in the states and be part of the state tournament, which will be coming up. It's based on scores and compilation of that, so that's an awesome thing as well. In addition, our, both our boys and girls basketball teams qualified for states as well, so season keeps on going, and they'll be playing on Thursday, both, both the boys and girls are away, they'll play on Thursday in state. So you can see, although the winter season is coming to an end, there's a lot of fantastic individual and team recognition that still occurs. What I love about our coaching staff, and I mean this sincerely, is they always teach and coach team first, you know, and that's evident in all of our teams, and we're very proud of that, thank you to Mr. Dexter for his leadership on that. Last but certainly not least, we have some athletes that achieved some individual recognition that we always like to recognize through Mr. Dexter's report. Nick Clayton, he secured his one-hundredth win at the end of January, that's an extremely, extremely difficult thing to do, so congratulations to Nick. And then for Athletes of the Week, we had Riley Van Vera in swimming, she's a freshman. Nick Clayton, senior wrestler. Emily Cooper, senior, senior for girls wrestling. Ryan Davis, a sophomore for swimming, and Elena Schuman for basketball. Which was another awesome game we had last week, it was a great community event, gets started, and the place was packed, and we had an awesome time. One of the best times to be principals, we went to watch those, and so I appreciate all that. Any questions, if you don't have a lot of information at, at one time? Okay, thank you for everything.
And our next presentation, very kind of question by Mr. James, Andrew.
So this is Black History Month, and as a board, had a chance to see tonight, our senior and staff really exceeded our expectations, just really an incredible event. Most years, our staff embrace this issue, and classroom lessons provide meaningful and purposeful and sincere engagement with this topic. And this is not, you know, minimal, because what happens is when students experience something in multiple disciplines, even in the classroom, it really helps strengthen their understanding of the connection between art and music and science, et cetera. So it's a great way to do it, and, you know, the crux of education happens in the classrooms down the hallway behind us. However, we did all those things this year, in particular to our humanities department, we really hit it out of the park with some incredible lessons. After last year, a student approached, Mr. Talley, and said, "There are a lot of great things happening, but I think we need something from a communal standpoint to celebrate this month, so that all students can have a common experience and come together with a shared experience." So, Mr. Talley hosted a series of meetings with students and parents, and we came to the idea that we need something that is kind of school-wide. So thank you to his leadership, to the parents in the community who participated, and to our student voices who stepped up and said, "I think we can do something a little bit bigger." As Mr. Talley had mentioned, we had some staff leaders really came forward, did a fantastic job with our Black History Museum, and some student groups as well. And it debuted today, it was phenomenal. And there's Mrs. Aludo, who was one of the driving forces behind it, with the outline of all the exhibits that were on display. What was really nice was Mrs. Aludo purposely limited it to about seventy or eighty students per period, so that it would be, students can mingle, they can interact, they can engage with the exhibits, and it ended up being just a beautiful thing all day long, where three or four classes per period would come in and engage with the activities. We had biographies, we had art projects, phenomenal student artwork, we had music and dance being streamed in the upper deck, and perhaps our signature piece, an installation near the ceiling in the upper deck of the media center, inspired by the artist Charles Mc... McGee, an African-American artist from Detroit, who comes up with all these incredible pieces of art. And Mrs. Kelly Sheenice was the driving force behind this. She provided, through the phys ed department and through staff meetings, an opportunity for every single student and staff member to get a little strip of paper and to do anything they wanted with it, to make it personal and unique and creative. Then they're woven together to show the strength of the unity of different, unique individuals bound together in a common installation, and how that really reflects strength, you know, one out of many. The quote there from Charles McGee is trying to understand the order that holds the world together. When we all work together, we understand more, we tolerate more, we live better lives because we are talking about and being moved by togethers. And this week, with the Black History Museum, High Point is indeed moving together and talking and thinking and acting as one. So we're really proud of our staff and our students. I love the communal. We need to have events each year where students come to life at the same time, on the same day, they're experiencing the same great thing, and this truly provided that for our students. So thank you to all, if possible, and the next two days we'll have more, look positive in our areas. And one more, very quick thing. Mr. Drumm texted me weeks ago, he is at the Board of Trustees meeting at the County College. No, he's not leaving us to become new administrator there. He was asked to come and speak to the board, because High Point does such an outstanding job with the Jump Start Program and with concurrent enrollment. So our partnership with the County College is very strong. Thank you to our guidance departments, Mr. Drumm and others, to ask a High Point student who's in the Jump Start Program, they asked her to come and speak about it. The Jump Start Program is where high school students can leave here in the morning, go to the County College, come here in the afternoon, or vice versa. It's a creative opportunity to allow our older 17, 18-year-old students to do something different with their day. And I think we were honored that Mr. Drumm was invited to speak as a high school representative about the program.
Okay, back to, we have no other business, so we'll proceed right to action items. First off is critical instruction and actology.
Okay. So items one, two, and three are faculty attendance, student attendance and suspension report for January, and there are attachments with that information. And I'll move items four through eight together. Item four is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report for January 29th, February 25th, 25th attachment. Number five are the field trips that are approved, that we will be approving tonight. Number six are the professional development activities, there is an attachment to that as well. Number seven is the revised 24, 25 school calendar. And number eight is the extended school year program, which starts Monday, September 7th, February 30th, August 7th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So we're making motions, give me a second. Any discussion on these items?
Roll call. Ms. Sheenice?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Palacet?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Next is personnel.
I'd like to move items one through five together. Number one is approving Barbara McElroy as a part-time professional aide. Number two is approving Kevin Markey as a part-time professional aide. Number three is approving substitutes Daniel Burke and Lisa Schmidt. Number four is approving maternity childcare. Number five is approving Julia Guerrero as a substitute teacher, serving at the replacement for an art teacher. And that's all for the five. Making a motion, second, second. Any discussion?
Roll call. Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palacet?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
I'll move under extracurricular items one through four together. One is recommendation to accept a resignation of Nicholas DiCarlo as co-assistant baseball coach at the Amelia. Item two is recommendation to approve the following extracurricular appointments for the 2024-2025 year as listed. Item three is recommendation to approve of Nicholas Colisos as Unified Track Assistant Coach for the 2024-2025 school year at the Unified Grant, stipend of $1,000. And item four is a recommendation to approve the following volunteer coaches for the 2024-2025 school year as listed. So I will make that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to thank all of our volunteer coaches for stepping forward. The truth is, if we don't have volunteers in some of these positions, we don't have coverage. And so we are very fortunate to have members that do step up to be volunteers. We don't take that for granted. No other comments?
Yes. Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palacet?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Moving along policy, Ms. Orsi.
Just one item policy involving approving the first reading of a new policy called Spectator Code of Conduct for Internationalistic Events, which is a mandated new policy mandated by NJHS by AA. So making a motion, give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call. Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palacet?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
We have no action items under negotiations for buildings and grounds, so I'll move to finance. I will move, I'd like to move items one through 11 all together. Item one is a recommendation, accept a report of the Board Secretary of Business Administrator for the month of January 2025. Item two is a recommendation, accept a report of the Treasurer for the month of January 2025. Item three is a recommendation to approve the report of transfers and minimum expense transfer report for January 2025. Item four is a recommendation to approve for payment, the attached schedule of what it is billed, dated February 25th, 2025. Item five is a recommendation to accept the Adult Education Agency account, athletic account, cafeteria account, construction account, principals petty cash account, scholarship account, school store, and student activities reconciliations for January 2025. Item six is a recommendation to approve vendor payments for the Spring Musical to the individuals as listed. Item seven is a recommendation to accept an anticipated grant from New Jersey STEM Pathways in the amount of $500 to support upcoming High Day on March 14, 2025. Item eight is a recommendation to acknowledge and gratefully accept a donation in the amount of $1,510 from Sussex County PAL, the Purchase American Flags for the Cheerleaders. Item nine is a recommendation to approve the Athletic Director, Chris Dexter, to attend the previously approved overnight trip to Atlantic City to support our wrestlers if they qualify. Item 10 is a recommendation the board approves receipt of $39,814.39 from Sussex County Community Youth Services for substance use prevention, early interventions, reimbursement of vaping sensors that were previously installed at High Point. And item 11 finally is a recommendation to approve and authorize the execution of the following tuition contracts between High Point as the sending district and the following districts as listed. So I'll make that motion on one through 11. I have a second. Any discussion on any of those? Gratefully thanking both the New Jersey STEM Pathways and the donation from the Sussex County PAL for their donation. Did I miss one? Oh, in Sussex County.
Youth Services for Substance Use Prevention.
Yes. That was the biggest. So thank you to all of those organizations. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes. So all except number six, was where I've seen.
Ms. Palacet?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And transportation, Mr. Vanstone?
Moving two. Two, oh. Apparently, I missed a great meeting. One is joint transportation agreement, one is field trip. So I'm moving both, can I have a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions on those two? Okay.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Palacet?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Do we have no correspondence? Under miscellaneous, just noting, High Point will be hosting a jazz festival on April 16th from 3:00 to 10:00 PM. Several local schools will be in attendance. And we have Hidden in Plain Sight here, but that was already reviewed by Mr. Talmane. Our school board mandated training, standing notice on there. I did want to mention too, there's also the Unson Heroes.
It's going to be held at Sparta.
It's going to be held at Sparta, and I think it's the 31st of March, that we will likely be recommending a student for that.
March 31st.
March 31st, okay. We'll have a meeting before then, so we can talk, we can mention it again.
It's Friday, 6:00.
At 6:00, yeah, okay. The inaugural Unson Heroes was held here last year, it was a wonderful event. So with that, I'll open for public comments in our second section of the evening. Please state your name and address, same rules apply as the first section. Anything virtual?
No.
Would anybody like to address the board in attendance? Have a motion closed? Oh, yes, sure. So Mr. Dunn, the conclusion of Ms. Minkuso's comments. Could I, I know everybody else knows you, but in case there's somebody in the public that's asking. So I'm Ben Catver.
Thank you.
You had mentioned that negotiations was moving forward, and that, you know, mediation was something that, at least like, kind of where we had left off, would be something that we would be able to work through. That last meeting that they get canceled, we're looking forward to meeting in person. The intention of having that meeting was always on our plate, we hadn't heard anything about having it canceled. That same night, there was a wrestling match that happened here that went on for quite a while. So again, like, we were absolutely looking forward to getting to face the faces of that one. One other thing was, our lawyers have been in communication throughout this entire time frame. So I guess the main point I'm trying to make is that throughout this entire thing, we've been working to broker a deal. We're not that far away, we want to get it done. We were hoping the mediation process would already happen, and we're looking out to be here. Absolutely want to look forward to making sure that we can look forward to the future. Okay, thank you. I have no argument with anything that you said, Mr. Catver. Any other public comments? Motion closed, public comment?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any votes? With that, I'll entertain a, unless there are some non-committee board member reports that anybody would like to speak in public about? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.